We're ready to start.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. I am Carol Russ. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area, and we believe fervently in an informed electorate, which is why we do candidate forums. We invite the candidates to come appear when we have a contested election. So seated before you, you have four of the five candidates. One was called away unexpectedly. You can only vote for three. Five names will be on your ballot, but you can only vote for three.
You can vote for four.
Oh, excuse me. Vote for four. Thank you for correcting me. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Jackie McGrath, who is our moderator for this event. The league customarily asks a person from outside the voting area to be our moderator, so she doesn't have particular opinions formed of the questions and candidates, but she will conduct our forum from now on. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to be with you today to moderate this candidate forum. As a resident of Barrington, I'm not eligible to vote in this election, so I have been asked to serve as an impartial facilitator for this discussion as a volunteer with the League of Women Voters, Lake Forest, Lake Barrington, Lake Bluff area. Let me take a few minutes to explain the format and the rules for the forum. All the candidates were contacted by mail, email, or phone, and have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area. They are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order. I will rotate this order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will answer every question. Candidates' answers will be timed by a team of timers. They will hold up a sign indicating how much time the speaker has left. Timers, please hold up your signs so everyone can see them. And thanks to our timers for their assistance. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for their opening statement. Next, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer questions. I will repeat the question if necessary. Candidates will be given 60-second and 30-second reminders of the time remaining before they see the stop sign. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. Candidates have been asked not to interrupt one another. Closing remarks will be given in reverse order from the opening statements. No voices, images, or other duplication of the forum may be used by any candidate, representative, or campaign. The League of Women Voters of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area claim copyright ownership of any recording or transcript produced. If you would like to ask the candidate a question, please raise your hand, and an usher will give you a card to write on. When you have finished, raise your hand again, and an usher will pick it up. Please turn off your cell phones. Also, in respect for our candidates, no loud noises such as clapping or talking during the forum. Candidate Kimberly Born Sakaro couldn't be here. Today, we will hear from the other four candidates hoping to serve on the board of the Lake Bluff School District 65. With us today and on the ballot are Lauren Hirsch, Tim Penich. Okay, I'm sorry. And then Carrie Steinbach and Andrew Carlson. I want to thank all of you for your participation. We'll begin with your one and a half-minute opening statements. By number draw, candidate Hirsch will go first. Candidate Hirsch?
Hi, my name is Lauren Hirsch. My husband and I live in Lake Bluff and have for the last 15 years with our two girls. I have a freshman at the high school and a sixth grader at the middle school. I grew up in Lake Forest and went on to get my degree in special education from Miami University, and then my master's from Dayton University in educational leadership. I taught one year here in Chicago area for what is now True North before moving to Ohio, where I worked for the Olentangie School District. With Olentangie, I was an intervention specialist, a special ed supervisor, and then ended there as an assistant principal at an elementary school. We moved here in 2010 and have loved every minute of it. I volunteer on the PTO and other local organizations. When COVID hit, the district was in dire need of subs, so I went and got my subbing license and have been subbing too in the district. On the board, I feel like I bring a unique voice, being somebody who's been in the schools and an administrator, and have enjoyed the last four years and hope to be reelected to continue to do everything I can for the district and the community. Thank you.
Candidate Penich.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for being here today. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff for sponsoring the event and all the work you do to educate voters in our community. My name is Tim Penich, and I've had the honor to serve as a member of the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education since April 2021. My wife and I have lived in Lake Bluff since 2015, and we have two sons, both of who are students here at Lake Bluff Elementary School. While I'm the parent of children in the district, I believe as a member of the Board of Education, my duty is to represent all residents of the district, whether or not they have children attending our schools. I'm a firm believer in public education and believe a strong public school system benefits the entire community. Our district has accomplished many things over the past few years, from partnering with Lake Forest District 67 and High School District 115 on the development of the Portrait of a Learner competencies, to the negotiation of a new collective bargaining agreement with our teachers. I'm particularly proud of our strategic plan approved in spring 2023 and the transparent manner in which it was developed. I'm incredibly proud of the state of public education in Lake Bluff and hope to continue to represent the residents of this community as a member of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Candidate Steinbach.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Steinbach. I'll be listed as Caroline as my given name. I'm a resident of Lake Bluff for the last 11 years. I have a husband and five children, two at the elementary, two at the middle school, and one as a freshman at the high school. I went to Marquette University and had a major in information technology and supply chain management. I currently am a stay-at-home mom to those boys that drive me nuts. My parents live in Knollwood. They moved up here a couple of years after we did to help out with all the kids. I took an active role at True North on the Parents Board. I am a member of the Lake Bluff Women's Club. I volunteered for the Fourth of July Parade. I've done work with Boys and Girls Club, and I started a group called 100 Women Who Care that kind of disbanded locally but is still a national charity. A little bit more of a background, my dad was a professor, did a lot of work in the school systems growing up, so it was just something that was a natural fit for me. And I'm a current board member who, with Tim and Lauren, have been working on the strategic plan, teacher contracts, and just all the things that come with board membership. I think that's it. Thank you.
Candidate Carlson.
Thank you. Andrew Carlson, I am a lifelong resident of Lake County. I grew up in Waukegan. I graduated from Warren High School. I attended Central Michigan University. I had an undergraduate and Bachelor of Science with a history background. I received my teaching license at Rockford College. I have been a middle school social studies teacher. While attending or while teaching, I received my first master's in the art of teaching. I received a second master's in educational leadership, which I have used to become an elementary assistant principal in Waukegan and Round Lake. And I am currently the principal at the Lake County Regional Safe School Program, which oversees all the students in Lake County who have been expelled for behavioral reasons. We work in partnership with the Lake County Regional Office of Education and the Special Education District of Lake County, otherwise known as SEDOL. I have been living in Lake Bluff with my family for the past two and a half years, and throughout that time, I have volunteered to coach some of the youth sports in town: girls softball, boys basketball, boys baseball. Oh, boy, 30 seconds left. I cannot say how proud I am of the growth that my children have made since joining the Lake Bluff school system. So in my last few seconds, I would just like to thank the three current board members for overseeing their education while they have been in the school district, and thank you so much, and hopefully I can join your team and bring that growth to every student in Lake Bluff. Thank you.
Now, let's move on to questions. Remember, you each have one and a half minutes to answer. First question, what will you do to ensure the highest quality learning environment in Lake Bluff schools? Candidate Penich.
Thank you. As the Board of Education, I think our job is to support the administration and ask questions to ensure that at all times the student's best interest is in need. We have high expectations for quality education in this community. And while we do have high performing schools, I feel there is still growth to be done, and our administration, the teachers, and staff are all working on that. And as a board member, I think it's our job to support that work while also measuring its progress and making sure that the work continues. And if there are improvements in academic achievement that's not where it should be, then it's on us to ask why and to see what else can be done.
Candidate Steinbach.
Can you repeat the question?
What will you do to ensure the highest quality learning environment in Lake Bluff schools?
Thank you. I believe that we have a financial responsibility to the community and to the students to make sure that we have a school that is in the top tier of expectations. I believe we need equity, but we also need proficiency. I agree with Tim. I think that it's our job to make changes if we see that our students are failing or are falling between the cracks, and that is by having a supportive administration and work with everybody on our current strategic plan.
Candidate Carlson.
I believe we can ensure high-quality learning by breaking down some of our current data trends that we see using IAR testing, ISA testing, MAP testing, looking for gaps, trying to find out how we can close those gaps, working with the administration, working with the superintendent to know that we are supporting her in all of her endeavors to make sure that all students can show that excellent growth. We want to make sure that we are looking out for all of our learners. For instance, my son has an IEP. We want to make sure students are receiving the best possible services while they are here so that they can close those gaps. And I do believe we do that by being fiscally responsible, but also ensuring that we are giving the superintendent, principals, the teachers, and the students all the tools they need to be successful.
Candidate Carlson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to hear. Sorry. I agree with the other three candidates. I think we just need to continue to offer high-quality learning environments for our students. We'll be fiscally responsible. We, as board members, in the last four years have asked a lot of questions. When we get those questions from the community members, we then turn and speak to our administrative team. We just, maybe two weeks ago, hosted a roundtable for the community when there were pretty consistent questions coming up about things. And we want to hear from the community. We want to hear from the parents. We want what's best for the students. We want what's best for the teachers. And as a team, we want to work together to get everything we can for the kids, for the teachers, and for the community while being fiscally responsible.
In the area of student achievement and growth, what is the top priority for improvement in student achievement in Lake Bluff? And we'll start with candidate Steinbach.
Wonderful. I believe that achievement and growth could be seen not only in the testing that we do mandated by the state, but also the testing that we do to see each child's individual growth metrics. I also have a son that has an IEP, and his growth looks a lot different than his twin brother, who excels at test-taking. So I think that really good metrics and data analyzation to see that each kid is getting the education that they need to make small growth, if not a lot, is not just in testing. It's in the way that they're learning. If they're making small achievements, I think that shows a lot for what we're doing in the schools.
Candidate Carlson.
Again, I've seen absolutely tremendous growth out of my son, who has an IP in the past couple of years, much more than I had seen in previous years. So again, I cannot speak highly enough of the education he is receiving in Lake Bluff. And to ensure that all students are receiving that same education, showing that same growth, I do need to think we are analyzing the data, looking for ways to improve instruction when need be, ensuring that we have enough positions available for all students, I mean, ensuring we have enough adults in the school that can support all of our students based on their needs. And again, I think we do that by working with administration to ensure that we are listening and to what they say that they need, as they are the ones that are in the buildings daily. They are the ones that will know how to best support their students, and we need to be there to support them in their quest to achieve student achievement and growth for all students in Lake Bluff.
Candidate Hirsch.
As a previous teacher, test scores and student performance is always at the forefront of my mind, but I think it's important to look at the big picture. And it comes down to supporting all of our students. In these classrooms, we have a diverse need or range of needs, everything from students needing support to students needing enrichment. And I think it's important to make sure that everyone's getting what they need in the classroom so that we can see it in those test scores. But like the other candidates have said, it's not always just the test scores. Every student progresses in a different way and shows their progress in different ways. All students learn differently and have different needs, and I'm committed to supporting an inclusive and high-quality education for all students in Lake Bluff.
Candidate Penich.
While our Illinois Assessment of Readiness test scores, the amount of students who are proficient in math and language arts are higher than the state average, it's still not where we want it to be as a district. And the administration has been working on curriculum changes and other changes to ensure our students continue to succeed and grow, continue to grow. I think as a board, we're there to support these changes and also ensure that they are doing what they're intending to do. There's also some achievement gaps within our district for different groups that are, some are smaller than state average, others are larger, and we have to be mindful to make sure that those students get the help that they deserve and need to achieve. So as others have said, it's important that we create an atmosphere that all students can achieve and succeed.
Candidate Steinbach.
I was first.
You did? Sorry.
That's okay.
I got a little confused here, but that's just me. If the federal government shuts down the Department of Education, how would you address this funding cut? And candidate Hirsch?
I think it's Carlson.
It's going to be Andrew.
No, candidate Carlson. I'm all mixed up.
Can you repeat that one more time? Sorry.
If the federal government shuts down the Department of Education, how would you address this funding cut?
Well, I think one of the benefits of living in Illinois is that we live in a state that really is putting forth the effort to ensure that students are receiving the education. The Illinois State Board of Education has numerous grants that are available. And part of my position currently, my school is run with a $1.3 million, well, partially run with a $1.3 million grant that I write every year to renew, as well as my time as school principal at the Lake County Regional Safe School Program. I've written a technology grant that brought in Promethium boards to all of our classrooms. I've written a post-secondary grant, which allowed us to hire a new teacher focused on ensuring our students have pathways after high school into either college or careers. So I think looking to the Illinois State Board of Ed or ISBE to find out what grants are available, find out how we can use the Illinois State Board to supplement the revenue that we have coming in would be the first step to ensuring that all students are receiving the supports that they need to be successful.
Candidate Hirsch.
I agree with what Andrew said, and I think that we are so fortunate for the team of leaders we have in Lake Bluff between Dr. Lee Ali and our CSBO, Jay Kahn. Jay, every meeting that we have, he tells us about different grants he's looked at, or he's looking into or what, you know, he's been able to find that directly impacts our students in our building. As a school board member, I don't really have a lot of control of what happens with the Department of Education, but I can assure you that we have these students at the forefront of our mind, and we'll do everything possible to make sure that they get the support that they need.
Candidate Penich.
Thank you. Fortunately, well, much of our tax dollars in District 65, over 90% come from local property taxes, fortunately or unfortunately, fortunately in terms of this question, I should say. So that would somewhat buffer us from any federal, any cuts as a result of the abolishment of the Department of Education. That being said, the money we do receive from the federal government is very important as it helps fund special education and other similar programs. That being said, I think, as other candidates have mentioned, looking at grants, if this were to happen, would be crucial. And depending on how much funding would be removed, it may require some tough choices or things to be looked at by the board and the administration.
Candidate Steinbach.
Okay. I hope that doesn't happen. I know that we, like Tim said, we do not require a lot of funding from the federal government. I do know that we receive some funding from our state governments. I think that what we would do is start by exploring alternative sources. I know that we have a very healthy fund balance that we would be able to dip into if need be. But again, I really hope that doesn't happen. I do know that it's extremely important that we have all of our grants covered because they are very useful for the sections that we use them in, if it's special education, if it's low-income families funding for free lunches, things like that. That's it.
Okay. Next question. List the two most promising community partnerships that the Lake Bluff schools could enter into for the benefit of the students. Candidate Hirsch.
I, one of the partnerships that I value a lot is with the library. I remember sitting in one of our first board meetings, and we approved our partnership with them that allows every student to get a library card. Once they're in, within the schools, they get one. And we actually asked if they would come to, like, curriculum night or conference night, so that those families that can't necessarily get their kids to the library, that they could get those kids their cards. Another partnership is with Croya, the organization out of the Park District in Lake Forest, but services our kids in both middle school and high school. SEL has been a big thing, and I think Croya does a great job of bringing that social, emotional support to our students. And it's always great to see the Croya bus picking up at Lake Bluff Middle School and the programs that they offer to really get our kids to partner with the Lake Forest students and just ones within our own buildings.
Candidate Penich.
I agree with what Lauren said about both of those partnerships, specifically with the public library. It's our, the students who come to our school from unincorporated areas don't have access to a library card if it weren't for this partnership between the school district and the library. In addition to that, I think the district's done a lot of important work recently with the high school to ensure that we're aligned with what they're teaching there, we're aligned with what's being taught in Lake Forest District 67, to make sure that our students are well-prepared for the future. And then finally, I would say our partnerships with the public safety organizations in our town are incredibly important. I know Dr. Lee Ali, our superintendent, has a good relationship with both the police, leadership at the police station and the fire station. And whenever emergencies arise, she is in contact with them. So I think that's important to maintain safety in our schools.
Candidate Steinbach.
I think the two most promising relationships that we should be in and currently are is our relationship with True North. It's a cooperative that we are in with, I think, 30 or 28 other districts that help our special education. I also believe that another relationship is, as Tim said, with the high school. We have a large amount of English as a second language, students coming through our school, and they will be at the high school. And I think it helps our kids that our English is their first language and the learners. If we have, like Tim said, alignment within our curriculum, we worked with them on Portrait of a Learner, Portrait of a Parent, Portrait of a Teacher, and I think it's just very helpful to keep the community bonds, because at the end of the day, it's all about the kids feeling like they're part of this community from now until high school and then after.
Candidate Carlson.
Wow, I think those are all absolutely amazing partnerships. I think the library would definitely be a must. I guess I'll just build on a couple. As far as the high school, and these are things that may be happening. So if I say something like, oh, we do this, that's fantastic, just some ideas I had. But getting our middle school teachers to collaborate with high school teachers so that they can actually sit down and talk teacher to teacher, what do our students need to, what do our students need to be prepared when they enter high school? And it's one thing if, as board members, we meet, or if, you know, the principals meet, but I think actually letting the teachers go in and talk with the teachers, finding time to do that, so that our middle schoolers are prepared for what life will be like in high school, as well as ensuring that our middle schoolers are getting a chance to over tour the high school, maybe running a mock schedule towards the end of their, oh, excuse me, writing a mock schedule towards the end of their eighth grade term, so that they can actually see what it will be like to go into high school, so that they're a little bit more prepared. As far as another partnership, oh, I guess I'll toot my own horn, say the ROE. We have tons of resources available, from staff development to funding. There are numerous, numerous things that we can do with the ROE that could benefit all the students in Lake Bluff. Thank you.
Candidate Hirsch.
I started it.
Please provide an example, oh, sorry. That's not your question. Please provide an example of an issue or initiative that you will promote if you are elected.
Starting, correct.
I'm sorry.
I'm starting, correct.
Please provide an example of an issue or initiative that you will promote if you are elected.
I think one issue or initiative is our strategic plan, which many of us has mentioned earlier, which was approved by the board in spring of 2023, I think is an important initiative and outlines the mission and vision of our district, and also includes several goals that the administration and with the board's support is seeking to achieve. So I think continuing to support the work to make sure we reach those goals is important.
Candidate Steinbach.
I don't really have an example of an issue to promote, because when I first was on-boarded to the board in 2021, it was told to me, like, board members don't have an agenda. You're not here to promote anything that you particularly want. You're a voice with the rest of your board as a collective. But that being said, I do know that the issues that are important to our community would be finances, policies, student achievement, community engagement. Those are things that I want to continue doing, that we are currently doing now.
Candidate Carlson.
Sorry, I jumped the gun there. I guess an issue or initiative I would like to see, and again, maybe we're doing some of this, and I apologize. You know, we are blessed to live in a community that is amazing. We have a lot of resources. A lot of our students have amazing home lives. But we also know that we do have some students that probably do need some extra supports, that do need some extra help with understanding maybe their surroundings, understanding why their life isn't exactly like the rest of the students in their classroom. So really pushing our SEL learning for students, for all students, to be accepting, understanding, and to let every student know that they matter and that their voice is important.
Okay, next question. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. I agree with what everyone said. I think the biggest point that I see is supporting the strategic plan. We were fortunate enough as current board members to sit on that committee with students, teachers, administrators, community members, parents, and it was an amazing experience that everyone kind of got to give their own opinion. And through that, the strategic plan was built. I think we just need to continue to work on aligning our goals with the strategic vision. And we've laid the road for District 65, if anyone's listened to the podcast that Dr. Lee Elliott does, and now it's just putting it to work. Everything Everything we have been doing the last couple of years have been following the strategic plan, including Dr. Lee Elliott's contract, or her evaluation. And I think it's, it is an amazing, amazing document, and I think with it, we'll continue to see success with our kids.
Do you foresee a need to raise taxes in your term? Why or why not? Candidate Steinbach.
Taxes are not really my forte. However, I do, I do not think that we need to raise taxes as I know that we have some of the highest taxes in Lake County. We currently have a award-winning Director of Finance on our administration who is sought out by other districts to align their finances. So I know that we're in a good place with our spending, our credits and debits and all that fun stuff. So I guess I will repeat, I don't think we would need to raise because we are in good financial standing right now.
Candidate Carlson.
No, I mean, I don't see a reason why we would have to raise taxes. Being fiscally responsible, it sounds like we have some very educated and smart individuals helping us out with our budgets, and as well as utilizing grants and other money available through the state and county to supplement any shortcomings that we may have, depending on the outcomes of what happens at the federal level. So I do not see any reason we would have to. So, no.
Candidate Hirsch.
I agree with the other suit, no. And one of the things we always say is it's important to wear the different hats. You don't, yes, I'm a parent, I have kids in the district, but when making decisions, I wear my board member hat and what's best for the community as a whole. And some of these recent concerns that parents have had, we always think, like class size, for instance, is a big one right now. And yeah, it'd be great to have tons of classrooms and really small numbers, but that's not being fiscally responsible to do that. That would not go well. So I think it's balancing the needs of the students and staff and the responsibility we have to our taxpayers to ensure transparency, accountability, and just long-term sustainability. But the answer is no.
Candidate Penich.
Well, I, I don't think we will, will need to have a referendum for, either for operating expenses or for any new building projects in the near future based on, and based on what we do know now. The tax levy, we approve every, at the end of every year, and that does increase. I don't know if that's considered increasing taxes. It doesn't always increase people's tax bill, but the levy does change, and that's in line with state law and capped by, by inflation. So, but I don't foresee the need for any referendum or in the future based on current, the current state of our finances.
What steps need to be taken to ensure the hiring and recruiting of excellent staff and teachers? Candidate Carlson.
So steps for hiring and recruiting, there are numerous methods we can go about. I know the Lake County Job Fair is coming up next month, I believe, so if we did have open positions, that would be a great first step, getting a table out there, trying to recruit some teachers from all over the county or possibly state. Making sure that when we are going through the interview process, asking questions that are really getting into the teacher's understanding of curriculum, of their understanding of assessments, how to read data, and whether or not they can be a member of the team. As far as retaining, I think that's by fostering a environment of respect, rapport, letting teachers know that they do have a certain degree of autonomy in their classrooms. We know where we want the students to, you know, get by the end of the year, allowing teachers to use that creativity that they've, you know, learned throughout their years of education themselves, to really promote individuality so that our teachers can, again, feel respected and feel like they are wanted and that their opinions are valued.
Candidate Hirsch.
The teacher voice is very important. We want teachers to want to be in our classrooms. If you have a teacher that loves what they're doing, it's obvious, and the kids recognize it. We recently started doing a HumanX survey where we, the teachers are surveyed, and we find out what their feelings are and what's going through, you know, what things could change. Carrie and I recently sat on the committee for the negotiating, the new teacher contract, and during that, the teachers said that they needed more planning time. We listened, we got creative, and not only were we able to give them more, more planning time, but we were able to eliminate the late starts that we were having once a month that is a disruption to the kids, the teachers, the parents. So I think it's listening to the teachers and looking at that survey, and we, we want them to be, we want them to be, we want them to want to be here. So I think it's important to listen to what they say. And as far as hiring, I think our administrative office is really aware of where to go and who, you know, what job fair is and that type of thing, but they know what they're looking for, and we want teachers that are motivated in the classroom.
Candidate Penich.
I agree with much of what Andrew and Lauren said, and I believe, you know, our, the recent collective bargaining agreement that was reached with the, the teachers, I think, is an important step in showing that we, we respect what they do, we respect the work that they do. And it's important as, as a board to, to show our respect for, for the teachers in our district and to support them any way, any way we can. With regard to attracting new, new staff to the district, we're fortunate that we, we are a high-performing district, but I, I think, again, I'll, same with showing our appreciation, appreciation for, for existing staff is just making it clear that this is a, a district that supports our teachers and, and gives them what they need to succeed and to, to help our children succeed.
Candidate Steinbach.
This is the first time I want to say ditto, just everything that they said. Lauren took literally my notes. I, like she said, I helped with the teacher collective bargaining contracts. And like she said, that we found some guaranteed planned time, which was really important to the teachers that they weren't currently receiving. I think it's really important that we take steps to hire and recruit diverse teachers that have been outside of our community, that have seen things that they can bring to our community. Like Lauren said, just the teacher voice, we think is really important to the students and to how well we are going to be productive in the district. I'm not really sure how to take those steps to hire and recruit, but I do know that our administration has the connections, like Andrew said, to make some very, I'm trying to think of the word that I can't think of, but I know that it's a place that a lot of people would want to be.
Oh, I just wanted to correct myself. The Lake County Job Fair dawned on me. We're already in March. It's next Saturday at Gray's Lake North High School. So, sorry about that.
Correct, that's fine. All right, it is March. What is the future for using AI? Will the board provide AI use guidelines or leave that to the individual teachers? Candidate Hirsch.
Every November, the school boards from all over Illinois are invited to the city to do, to go to the Triple I Conference. AI was very prominent. There were lots of different seminars that you could go to and listen. And technology in Lake Bluff right now is a hot topic. We, part of that roundtable that we had a couple of weeks ago, parents are concerned with the amount of technology in the classrooms. At this time, I don't, AI is amazing, but I think there's a lot to learn about it. And I'm sure teachers will use it, but I think it's something that we need to make sure we're fully aware of the range of it before we put it in front of our kids. Right now, we're, we're really excited because we got YouTube off the iPads. That was a big win for the district. But as far as AI goes, I don't, I don't think AI is something that we're going to get in the district unless everyone is confident in what it is and what it can and can't do. Just like any program that we have our teachers do, we'd like them to know all about it before we put it in front of our kids.
Candidate Penich.
As, the Board of Education makes policies that help, that guide the, guide the district. And I think it would be important to, to lean and listen to the administration to see if they feel that a policy regarding AI usage would be, would be useful either now or in the future, that could guide what, what's allowed in our classrooms and what, what teachers are able to do. But I, I think it's, it's something that the, the administration would need to look at first, and as a board, we would have to rely on their recommendations.
Candidate Steinbach.
I love AI. I used it to prepare for today, if you couldn't tell. I use it at home to help me teach my kids when I can't remember fourth grade math or the advanced math that my middle schoolers do. I 100% think that it needs to be monitored. I think that it, I believe we talked about it in a past meeting, that it would be a future agenda item for our policy committee to look at the positive and negative aspects of AI. It can be extremely helpful. It could also be viewed as a very divisive thing in the classroom. It's tough, but I do know, speaking to teachers, it's very helpful for them. It really helps them plan their days, plan their teachings. And Lauren was talking, you know, technology is a hot topic, but there is a big difference between technology and screen time. Technology is very helpful. Screen time is when you melt your brain before you go to bed and then complain that you can't fall asleep, so.
Candidate Carlson.
Well, I've seen Terminator, so. Just kidding. I'm actually kicking myself right now. I was at the Illinois Coalition of Educators for at-Risk Youth Conference last week in Bloomington, and they had a session on AI in the classroom, and I went to the ISB session on funding instead. So, dang. What I will say, I've limited use with AI. I think technology, like any technology, AI should be used to supplement our education, not replace it. And as well, I don't think, no matter how much we use technology or AI, it's not going to replace those actual in-person teacher-student relationships that really, I think, are the foundation for the educational experience. So AI, like every new technology has come, or it's going to come that we don't even know about, I think will be an asset in the classroom, but it's just about overseeing how it's being used and how it can best assist our students.
What will you do to improve standardized test scores in math and reading? Candidate Penich.
As was previously mentioned, I believe Lauren mentioned that there's increased collaboration time for, for our teachers that, as a result of the recent collective bargaining agreement. That has resulted in a new enrichment, 90 minutes a week, that all students receive enrichment at a time which includes, focuses on science and social studies. This allows the classroom teachers to, to focus most of their time and efforts on English Language Arts and math instruction in our, in our elementary school, which I think, this is the first year that it's being done, but hopefully it will, will lead to increased scores in our standardized testing for the district.
Candidate Steinbach.
Repeating what Tim said, we, sorry, well, no, I'm not going to repeat, but to increase our scores, we are currently working on guaranteed viable curriculum, which means that we're putting it online so that every student, every parent, every teacher can see where we are and what we're teaching the kids. There's a lot of state mandated curriculum that needs to happen, that the teachers need to get through, and because we now provide time for them to plan, they can align their teachings while the kids are learning the social studies and science that they are also tested on at certain points in their grade levels. And I just think it's really important that we have our curriculum lined up, our, it's guaranteed, it's out there, it's visible for everybody to see so that we can supplement, if need be, on our own at home, or we are just aware of what's going on in the classrooms for the kids to achieve better scores.
Candidate Carlson.
I think enrichment time is an absolutely fantastic idea. I think that is a great way to target areas of growth for students. Along with that, I think we do need to ensure that our teachers have the ability to properly analyze the data they're receiving, are being given the tools to make sure that they are able to assess students properly, and able to have those conversations with their peers and fellow educators on what steps need to take place. And I think that happens by teachers being able to collaborate, being able to actually share ideas in an area where they know their thoughts are being valued. So I think really making sure teachers know the importance of the enrichment time as well as the students, and just making sure that they're getting the most, using it to, using the time wisely to the benefit of all students.
Candidate Hirsch.
As Carrie and Tim mentioned, the combination of the guaranteed viable curriculum and the enrichment program are both going to have a big impact on our students. I think strengthening our core economic focus in areas like ELA and math will drive up those test scores. The enrichment program is unique. There aren't, I think there's one other district in the state of Illinois that has a program like that. It's new, this is the first year, but we are very excited to see the, what, what it has to give those teachers the time. When they meet for those 90 minutes, they meet with Jackie Tivador, who's our curriculum person, and she goes over the test scores and looks at the gaps. And they, it is a constantly evolving program where they look at the needs week to week, month to month, and are able to talk to the other grade levels, talk to, you know, within their, their team and make changes as need be.
Are the Lake Bluff middle school students prepared to compete academically at Lake Forest High School? Candidate Steinbach.
I love these questions. Yes, actually, we, I'm going to probably butcher the percentage, I think 96% of our current ninth-grade students are in, maybe it's not 96%, 86% are in A or B level at the high school. This is not documented, but my opinion is, from what I've learned, is that the Lake Bluff students are usually in mostly honors and higher levels of the subjects at the high school, and they are very, very well-prepared by our middle school teachers to handle the workload, you know, change into the high school mentality. They do do middle school teacher-to-high-school teacher vertical alignment in the study, in their classes to make sure that they are at the social studies level, at the Language Arts level, and at the math levels that they should be at.
Candidate Carlson.
So as the newbie, and someone who's been in town for about two and a half years, I cannot speak and say, yes, they're guaranteed, I can guarantee they are, but based on what Ms. Steinbach has said, it sounds like we are doing a fantastic job of preparing our students. It sounds like we are seeing the collaboration between the high school and middle school teachers. And then really, I would want to make sure that those partnerships continue as well. I think, again, giving our middle schoolers a chance to actually go over, maybe speak with some of the ninth graders, or having ninth graders come back and speak to the middle schoolers or both, just really to set the tone for what these students can expect when they go to high school. But really just ensuring that the students are prepared by seeing that collaboration between middle and high school teachers, seeing it continue, and really just pushing our students in middle school to be better than they were the day before.
What is a procedure for teachers to follow if they, I'm sorry.
You're okay. You're still good. You're okay.
I lost track. Oh, that's right. Sorry.
It's all right. This was actually a concern, and so it was brought up at a board meeting, asking specifically, are our ninth grader, kids in ninth grade, are they prepared? So much so that we sent out a survey. We surveyed all of the ninth graders, we surveyed all the parents of ninth graders to find out how they feel after that first semester. And like Carrie mentioned, Dr. Lee Ali is sharing the actual data at our next board meeting, but overwhelmingly, yes, they were prepared, they were happy, they felt like they had what they needed. I think our partnership with not only District 115, but also 67 is really important, and through the portrait of the learner, we have, you know, established that. And I, as a parent of a ninth grader, I can definitely say that my ninth grader was thoroughly prepared, and I am very satisfied with her experience there, based on everything that happened kindergarten through eighth grade.
Candidate Penich.
Just to build off what everyone else has, has said, which I, I agree with, I know that our, the middle school administration and teachers meet with representatives of the high school, as well as Lake Forest District 67, to ensure that, that we're aligned and that our children are, are prepared to enter Lake Forest High School. Lauren mentioned the, the survey that the district put, put out. I think that is, it'll be interesting to see, to see the results of that and to, to continue to, just to ensure that our, our students are, that we are, we do continue to prepare our students for the, for the high school as well as we have been.
Has District 65 banned any books? Should there be a policy? Candidate Carlson.
Banning books, that's a pretty touchy subject. I think if books are age appropriate, I'm not in the business of banning books. I think if there is a book in question that parents have issues with, I think they could bring it to the school board. Again, though, I don't foresee myself being on a banning book crusade. I think there are many stories out there in many other parts of the country that have been banned, which I really don't see the value in banning these books. So I'm, I don't know, I'm not on the book banning committee. You'd have to really convince me that a book is that awful to remove it from our school library. Yeah.
Candidate Hirsch.
Over the last three and a half years on the board, there have not been any books banned that have come to the board. I think as a board member, it's important to ask questions. And if a teacher, or if a parent or teacher or student came forward with a concern, as a board member, I would ask those questions to the team making the policy to get more information. But no, there have not been any books banned since I've been on board.
Candidate Penich.
Yeah, we, the board has not banned any books, at least in the last four years, and we do have a, a policy on, on the subject, a board policy, that follows the American Library Association guidelines about, and outlines a process to look at books, but we, we, we don't ban, we're not banning any books at, at the moment, to put it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Candidate Steinbach.
I think we are all aligned that we do not ban books in District 65. Like Tim said, we do have our, we do have a policy that has been reviewed in the last year, and it is along with the American Library Guidelines, which also do not ban books. We did have a student come to one of our board meetings, my timeframe is, if he, if it was a year ago, it was two years ago, and she had a project that she came up with to label books in the library with certain colored stickers, if I'm remembering correctly, to show maybe a book of a sensitive subject, or something that might be above a grading, reading level for somebody, for the kids that like to read ahead, it might just be a sensitive subject for them. And so it was wonderful to see that the school really supported this girl's project. Her idea was that she didn't want books banned from our library, and this was a really good way to ensure that kids weren't seeing something that they shouldn't have seen before they were age appropriate for it. So no, no, I don't ban books. I don't know if I said that.
What is the role of the school board in relationship to diversity, equity, and inclusion? Candidate Hirsch.
As a previous special education teacher and administrator, I know firsthand the range of needs in a classroom. I think it comes down to supporting all students. All students learn differently, they all have different needs. I am committed to supporting an inclusive, high quality, high quality education for all students. Thank you.
Candidate Penich.
I, I agree with, with what Lauren said, and as, as the board, I think it's, it's important that we support that the, every student in our district gets, gets a high quality education, no matter who they are or what their needs might be. Last summer, the board and the administration had a retreat together that looked at inclusive practices and how our district is ensuring that everyone's included and that everyone receives the education that they deserve.
Candidate Steinbach.
Sure. You know, just, it's a reminder that we are a public school system, that we are here to serve every single human in our district and community. I fully believe in equity, diversity, inclusion, all the practices. I grew up with a special needs sister who was very fortunate to be in a very good community like Lake Bluff, where she was in mainstream school, and it really was a supportive system for her. And so I fully believe that we can do the same for any child who needs any kind of learning difficulties or excels at learning and how to foster all of them.
Candidate Carlson.
Yeah, just simply put, every student should feel accepted for who they are. They should not feel unsafe in our schools. Staff should feel accepted for who they are. Parents, when they come into the school, should feel accepted for who they are. No one should feel unwelcome. I have a sign in my office that says, fair is not always equal, meaning that just because one student gets an extra hand or gets a little extra assistance here does not mean, it does not mean that all students need to receive that same assistance. Just because one student needs a little bit of extra push does not mean that they're getting any unfair treatment. It just means that they're getting treatment that is going to help them stay in line with their peers. So I think all students should be accepted for who they are and for the types of learners that they, that they are. Yeah.
What is the procedure for a teacher to follow if they have concerns about a student's mental health? Is the policy adequate? What updates do you recommend? Candidate Penich.
Unfortunately, I, I don't know what, what the procedure is, and I, I don't know if we have any policy regarding that, and that's something I, I should know as a board member. But I would, I would hope that our, well, I'm confident that our, our staff is, is trained to know what to do in those situations, and knowing our, our administration and the, the wonderful teachers we have in our district, I'm, I'm confident they know what to do.
Candidate Steinbach.
I am not sure which policy, I, I definitely know that we don't have a policy specifically for this, for a procedure of mental health. I do know that we have a large support staff. We hired psychiatrists, we have counselors, we have social workers on staff. I do know they get professional development throughout our entire teaching staff to deal with mental health issues. But when it comes to the exact procedure, I'm not aware that's more of a day-to-day thing that happens inside the school.
Candidate Carlson.
I think it's difficult to probably shell out an actual policy, because the mental health of one student may be completely different from another student having a mental health crisis. So I don't think there is a one-size-fits-all model. You know, if a student is coming in because they've recently lost a loved one in their family, you know, that might be the time the teacher goes to a social worker. Now, if a student comes in and is expressing interest in harming individuals, that might be time to go to an administrator. So I think it really depends on teachers knowing their students, and students being comfortable with their teachers from those relationships or form to be able to talk with the teachers. And then as our two board reps have said, knowing that the teachers have the tools to know what they should be doing with their next steps. Again, going to the social workers, going to the psychologists, going to behavior specialists, going to administration. I think it really depends on the individual issue, and again, depending on the age of the child, it, it's really going to make a difference on what the next steps would be.
Candidate Hirsch.
As a board member, we don't really hear about it because of student confidentiality. We know it's happening, and I actually sat on a committee last year about starting up a new program for the students to help recognize some of these, some of the signs of needing some extra support. In addition to that, we as a board did approve the addition of, we have our social workers in the building, but we realized the need of having somebody for those bigger instances, like a death in the family or a fire, things that will need immediate support. And it was hard when there was, you know, somebody was not available and the student had a need. So as far as the actual policy, I'm not totally sure of that, but I do know that we continue to look at what supports we can put in place for both the teachers and the students.
Are vaccine or health policies followed in the Lake Bluff schools? What are they? Do you support the current policy? Why or why not? And candidate Steinbach.
I, I do know that we have a, a very high rating when it comes to our state mandates, and that means we have been audited where people come in and they are looking at all of our policies, all of our procedures and things like that, when it comes to anything from how we lock up the school to vaccines and health policies. And I know that we are in alignment with the state. What those exactly are, I'm not sure, I'll be honest. But I do know that we are not in default of anything that is required by us by the state.
Candidate Carlson.
Yeah, as far as I can tell, Lake Bluff is following the Illinois, Illinois State Board of Ed guidelines, which only allows for certain exemptions for medical or religious reasons. So I think by following those, we're keeping our students safe, keeping our students healthy. I don't see a need to alter any plans. I think following the state guidelines would be best. I just wanted to touch base on the mental health. If you or anyone you know is suffering mental health, the county does provide free services. I don't have the number off the top of my head, though, but you can find those online. Thank you.
Candidate Hirsch.
I agree with Carrie and Andrew. I think aligning with the state and the State Board of Ed guidelines is important to keep our kids safe and healthy in our district.
Candidate Penich.
I, I agree with everything that's been said, and I know that we are in alignment with the, the state laws and guidelines with regards to vaccines, including any exceptions that are allowed by those guidelines. Also, just to note that data of how many students are vaccinated with the various vaccines is included on our, our district website, and it's, it's very high, so.
What is guaranteed viable transparency?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Well, repeat it. What is guaranteed viable transparency? Candidate Carlson.
I think just having your board meetings open to the public, I think recording sessions, having them somewhere easily accessible for the public to go back and watch so that they know what is going on. I believe trying to keep as much out in the open as possible. Again, sometimes there are confidentiality issues that would arise that would not allow the public to be totally informed on certain individual students or staff members. However, being open with the public and allowing as much public participation as possible so that we are visible and open to everyone.
Candidate Hirsch.
I'm, was it, can you, was it guaranteed curriculum, guaranteed viable curriculum?
Just viable transparency.
Okay. I think that it is, being transparent with the community, being transparent with the parents. My first, my brain went to the guaranteed viable curriculum that Carrie mentioned earlier, where the parents had a need for, or expressed a need for knowing exactly what was happening in those classrooms. You know, kids do a ton of work in school. Does every single piece of paper doesn't always come home. It doesn't mean they're not doing it. But with the guaranteed viable curriculum, we are working on putting everything on the webpage, so that at any time, a parent can go on and see what, you know, they're working on in math, what they're working on in science, and connected to the state curriculum as well. As far as board meetings, I feel like, you know, with our open meetings, we always have our budget meetings, we, we want to hear from the community. We want to listen to everyone, everyone in Lake Bluff.
Candidate Penich.
Yeah, I agree with both what Lauren and Andrew said with regard to transparency, and I feel that as a board, we're very transparent in the decisions we make, and certainly follow all Open Meetings Act law, the, the Open Meetings Act, and are always happy to have constituents reach out to us or attend meetings. If the question is related to guaranteed viable transparent curriculum, and I'm not in, professionally in education, but it's my understanding that, that means every guaranteed, every student will, what every student will be taught in a year, viable, that it's all able to be taught in a year, and then transparent, that it would be available for parents in the community to, to see what is, the curriculum actually is.
Candidate Steinbach.
That was a good definition of all three words, so I will back Tim up on that. I do know that as the current board, we pride ourselves very much on being transparent to the community. I know that we follow all of the Open Meeting Acts, the Closed Meeting Acts. We recently received a school board governance recognition award. It was given to the school boards that learn and practice effective governance behaviors as identified by the state's foundational principles of effective governance. So I know we follow all the rules. We got a really cool crystal award for it, and it's something I pride myself on. I know that Lauren mentioned, we go to the state convention for school board and administration, and sometimes we sit there and just kind of pinch ourselves because we have such a well-running group right now that doesn't deal with any of the nastiness that happens elsewhere. And I think that's really due to us being so transparent to the community members.
Time requires now that we move to closing statements. Candidates, you will each have one and a half minutes, and we'll begin with candidate Carlson.
So thank you, everyone, for coming. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Again, I have two children in this district, a middle school daughter, a son in the elementary school. I just can't speak highly enough for the education that they have been receiving and will continue to receive. And again, I think that is a testament to the hard work that these three individuals have done in the past few years. And I really just look forward to hopefully giving that, being given the opportunity to continue the work that they've been doing. Thank you.
Candidate Steinbach.
I just want to say thank you for having us and putting up with some of these topics. I love being able to be a part of Lake Bluff in this aspect. I would absolutely love to continue for the next four years. I think it's very important that we have voices on the board of current I think it's very important that we have voices on the board of current parent in the community, and I also appreciate having my parents here so that they can give me their feedback on what it's like to be a taxpayer without children in the district. But again, my most fun nights, that's kind of sad to say, are at our board meetings when the community comes and voices their opinion, and we get to hear from them, and can, you know, when Andrew says that he has seen the positivity that we've done, that's really why we do it, so thank you.
Candidate Penich.
Thank you all again for being here today and for all the thoughtful questions. As I stated earlier, I'm very proud of the work the Board of Education has done the last four years, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue to serve our community in this role. If so, I'd continue to support our district's efforts to achieve the goals outlined in our strategic plan while monitoring its progress, and I think it's important that our board continue to prioritize the needs of our students while also taking our role as stewards of taxpayers' dollars very seriously. Being a member of the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education has been incredibly fulfilling, and I'm truly grateful every day that the voters of this district have entrusted me to serve in this role. I hope to continue to serve the residents of our community in the future to help ensure our district fulfills its mission to provide an exceptional education that allows all of our students to grow both personally and academically. Thank you again.
Candidate Hirsch.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I hope I'm given the opportunity to serve on the board for another term. Serving the community and the schools is a responsibility I take to heart, it truly is a passion of mine. I believe in transparency, accountability, making decisions that reflect the best interests of the schools, the families, the educators, and the taxpayers. Families choose Lake Bluff for the excellent schools. I am eager to continue building upon the district's mission to deliver excellence every day for every student. Thank you.
As we bring the forum to a close, I want to thank the candidates for their participation on behalf of the League of Women Voters, the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Area League of Women Voters. Thank you all for coming. Please participate in our democracy by casting your vote. Your vote is your voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.